Keeping all the new doctors in line. Okay, one returned. One is good guy.
When did Doolittle come back?
You know, technically in July.
Okay.
But realistically, just the last couple of weeks that he's been seeing patients.
Okay. Very good. Are they moving back to the community or?
No, they'll continue to live there.
Okay.
We still have kids at home.
Right, right.
It's hard to keep up with the kids.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably pretty used to living here.
Hmm.
He's used to living here, why not?
Well, yeah, the kids are actually.
Let's stand and do the pledge, please. I pledge.
I would be United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't know if the road form is coming. No public discussion. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes dated September five? Second by Decker. All those favored, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Should we go right to the monthly update with the regional health center?
If we happen to collect.
So we ended our year on June thirtieth, we had the audit about a month ago now, so hoping to get that done and out the door here at the end of the month, so still looking at pre audit. Enough, enough, enough numbers, but don't expect a huge lot of change, so we ended the fiscal year with an operating margin of six point two five percent debt coverage. I ended that at six point two four, so looked, so looked good for the year. Our inpatient and ER numbers were the high, 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 highs that they've been in at least the last eight years. So we would presume that that's ever, but that's as far as our data goes, goes up at. Um, we normally sit around a hundred and fifteen to one five hundred and twenty firsts for the year, but this past year we ended at one third, thirty seven, so that was great to, to see. Um, we do have a scorecard with, with goals that our staff need need to achieve for the year and, and we did that, so, so we will pay out a a bonus to our staff this next, uh, uh, year for that. Um, starting out in July, July sees a loss most years, just with most of our doctors ta- taking PTO during that dur- dur- during that month, so that's kind of an anomaly and, and we really wouldn't expect every month to be like that. Um, we did across the board adjustment for our staff here in July and then we do a market adjustment for our staff in January as well, if, 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 um, if the market does show an in- increase, which in the past three years it does, so, um, just looking at the year, obviously salary and ben- ben- benefits is something that we expect to continue to, to go up to remain competitive. I'm sure that you guys deal with that, with that same thing. Um, some open jobs that we have, looking for two x-ray techs, we're looking for a nurse on third floor, some medical assistance in our li- clinic and a lab tech, so I think those are the main ones that we're look- that we're looking for now, radiology tests. Yeah, that, oh, that's right, yeah, yeah, and then just working on getting our maintenance shed done, hoping for a November timeframe for that and working with insurance to get our cash shed paid for has been a delight, so any questions for me, looking through the board packet, that all?
Numbers look consistent.
They are consistent, we're blessed from that standpoint, that's for sure.
Long as you stay above four percent.
Yes. Senior Life Solutions is our senior mental health program and that is about the running at a full force. I just can't tell you how positively that has impacted the lives of individuals within our community already, so we're falling out of waiting list, that's a big problem. Very proud to have for a new program in our community, so that augments the services, the mental health services that we have already in place. We've got Dr. Meehan Kinger D. Roach as well as Peter Jorgensen, our mental health nutrition practitioner, so that's a really good thing. Also DME, dermal medical equipment, that we have a soft opening this weekend, what that means is we can do cash and carry or not get approved or available, able to bill third-party payers, but that'll be coming very, very soon. We're expecting a survey anytime, so that has to be surveyed by the joint commission, then ready to go, of course. What questions do you have with us?
Well, the same inventory as what they had downtown?
I would say similar inventory, new, I am not familiar enough to know exactly what was downtown toward the end. We're definitely gonna have press calls for the new homes. Um, we'll have the respiratory equipment that patients use overnight, the other CPAPs for sleep and a whole array of precious waters, bandages, healthcare products, incontinence products, catheters, lots of stuff, and if we get anything else that we need by next day, delivery.
I hope I never see that place.
I hope I don't need that place, but I don't mind looking at it because it just.
And that's open, that's open now or?
It's a soft opening now, which means cash and carry, so we can self-services for cash and check.
Okay.
Um, we're not yet, we don't have the credit card machine yet.
There is.
And we can't build third-party insurances yet, but we'll be able to very soon. We're expecting a survey basically any day by the joint commission, so we have to be surveyed to.
Where is that located?
It's on the first floor of the hospital, so it's in our old medical records department. When you walk in the main door of the hospital, you can just ask for directions, but it's literally on the way to the cafeteria.
Okay.
So. Great, great service.
You can almost get lost going in that door though.
You almost can, there's a lot of directions to go, right?
Yeah. Anything? If not, thank you very much.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. How are you?
Doing well, how are you guys?
Good, thank you.
Monthly update from the secondary road form, the road's still there?
Yeah, what's ended up still there, they're all for shame, they're there. Need some rain, but that's not happening.
Yeah.
Yeah. That'll need to before we, uh, get like a fair amount before fall, there before, when in winter, so they can get things smoothed out, checked out, but.
Uh, they're not terrible, it's just you got loose gravel over.
Yeah, and a few rubble drips here and there. Wind rolls in grass and stuff, yeah, that's what we do before, yeah. Yeah.
Shoulders of roads, the blacktops are pretty decent all over.
Yeah, we've, we've done a fair amount of, of new rock on several miles, you know, it's. Trying to finish it up, but we got this land planned and again, I brought it ahead and go after that.
I would say they've done more shouldering this year than I mean, been able to complete more shouldering than what we have for a long time.
Gearing up for the dreaded winter season.
Slowly, we got bits and stuff delivered to all shops here two, three weeks ago and not looking forward to it, but we don't have it.
Yep, and also most fun time of the year.
Used to be.
I heard north of Big, the Foley Bridge, there's holes again.
I took about twelve bags up the other day, went across some of them, there's some of them are deep enough that you can put stuff in, some of them are, they're just gonna be rough. There's nothing to be had.
It's that two inches that leaves.
Yeah, I had that report to get the, get the bags to stay in, and folks out, I visit town, it won't stick, so. We're not the only county, there's a lot of counties, government rules, and all.
State highway even, even the interstate's got the same thing.
They have any idea what cost it all?
I have no idea, rotten tar.
Yeah, it's all over, you know, this ain't one area, it's all over.
Is there regulations on the tar when it comes out for blacktops?
Oh, yeah, everything's certified, tested.
But it appears that we've had more issues lately than we had before.
Last winter, for whatever reason, that was yeah, that's there. I know it's returning after last winter. Well, dude, we did a lot of scraping.
Yeah.
Last year, I don't fault that.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's some consternation, the.
Yeah.
Freeze thaw. Freeze thawed, stalled, stained.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Then we move back, Doctor.
Morning.
Morning.
We are up to transfers made by the auditor, everybody had a chance to look at them. Any questions for the auditor? Let the record show that we acknowledge it.
Be a lot bigger than that.
Yeah. Discussion on door a- access controls. Derek.
You have another tonight.
We could go to sign first, and some other people is waiting for, can be here till eight thirty, so if we could skip over and come back.
Sure.
Okay.
We'll skip over, we'll come back. We'll call the engineer. Willie, what do you have on the doors?
I'm the assistant, I believe we're skipping over.
It's eight thirty.
Thank you.
Thanks, well anxious.
He's gone four blocks and going down still skip.
We'll skip.
Yeah.
I'm gonna down to his office, yes.
He did not answer.
Well, Lisa. One or two.
Hey, it's Kyle, is Doug down into the office yet? We are going to skip the door access controls on the agenda, so he can come back up whenever he's ready. Perfect, thanks.
It'd be done before nine o'clock. No. I'll go get them all. Probably, we don't want NAF to get spoiled over there.
No.
We probably should.
Try at least another option.
Yeah, I should drag it out of the ways.
It's all the sound, we gotta make him, you know, at least wear it for an hour.
With drive time, he probably already has that.
Yeah, Chester. Forty-five miles on the road.
So vacation was good, you're just gonna do it again or?
We'll go on vacation then, sure. I don't know, last week was so much vacation, but it was a good trip. Be going to Texas sometime this winter, my wife's sister. Few days.
It's a whole nother state.
Yeah. Houston.
What is door to magistrate, where the mag lock, you know, that needs to?
Yeah, well, he'll explain, he explained the difference to me because I had the same questions. Um, and yeah, he'll explain, it's like the plate, your plate in there. My lock is like a steel plate or something, I understand differently.
So it's more secure? Okay.
So part of the amounts that you're looking at are gonna be for door, doors, to replace the glass doors, because it doesn't do any good to have you know, easy access key fob if you have a glass door.
Yeah.
Our extinguisher becomes an easy access key fob.
That's right.
That's the case.
That's right.
Well, you know, a few dollars here and there and a quarter bit.
Yeah. Was it budgeted for that mountain?
He's passed that up to Todd, and Todd said he also thought that that would be a good use of that, except when using those dollars, you have to make sure that, uh, and I created out for Derek to look at, that if it's any kind of infrastructure, it has to be produced by American, produced in American, by American. So I gave that copy to Derek overhand to double check on that. Um, and so I was gonna mention that too, is that those L A T C F months are ceiling there. Use less than, the election, no, they, I had ten thousand dollars for a security grant, that's, that'll pay for that. And then two thousand dollars for the I can grant.
Okay.
So twelve thousand dollars, um, pay, we have another twelve thousand dollars sitting there, you know, for this house.
By the way, look at your cut.
Thank you very much.
What about covering the door for the glass?
Yeah. Up on the third floor, I don't know if any of them there, but across from the clerk's counter, uh, when you go into the judge's offices, there's two windows right there that are next to the door, so they'd have to look at, um, doing something to make sure that those flat glass can't be broken into, so, uh, I think that might be part of the code too, I'm sure, what, yeah, will we be able to answer that?
Also includes IT room in the basement.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Cause I should answer.
Yeah, probably.
Election Center. Want to do three, there's three doors on the election center, we'll get it to.
I want you to do the, one. So that when you give keys out to anybody that's renting that facility, it can be trapped.
Okay.
And when a hit that, you'll be able to, we'll be able to program each fob, so you can only enter if you're a singleistic, but they haven't managed, so they'll be able to access it. And then on the south side of the building, the door that goes right into the portable room, that will have a key fob entrance. And then in the hallway, uh, to the, uh, office where we sent, where we compiled running permission and send it to the attorney, I think. But that will have a key.
What about anything to the courthouse in general, because?
Front door, something.
The front door.
Or just one, you can't remember, but yes, there are.
Yeah. Three, oh, yeah, three outside doors, so that'd be front, back, okay, inside.
Maybe we didn't need to skip. We just kept going.
I'd be able to answer out of the technical sense that I can answer.
Yeah. That's the guy from Drew come along or?
They're doing key fob.
Good morning.
Morning.
We are up to the placement of the sign on P forty and A twenty-one, Kyle, your name's on it.
Yeah, I guess, I was up in that area recently and I hadn't seen anything done, um, do you have any update for us in regards to?
I do not.
Okay, well, um, I talked to Adam recently, he would like a sign and, um, I guess, I, I feel it's necessary, or I feel it's valuable to put one there, um, when you look at the study that was done, there's for the design stopping distance, it was four hundred and ninety-five feet at fifty-five mile an hour and I think five feet for margin of error is pretty small, so I would make a motion to direct the engineer to install a child at play sign near this acreage that we've discussed within thirty days.
I would need a second to that motion. Again, I'll fall for a second. If I don't get a second, the motion will die for lack of a second.
I'll second the motion.
I have a second by now. Discussion.
There's something that, Emo, obviously you just said, this is something that the property owner family wanting, but, um, question first. I know you were going to be in conversations with the school district, I didn't know if you had been able to reach out to them or?
I have.
And I, do they have any thoughts as far as if they were willing to supply a sign or work with you on that or anything or?
They, the director of transportation, North Cassue, told me that he's never had any requests from the property owners or from the bus drivers, that felt that that was a dangerous situation.
Okay, thanks very much, but have you spoken with the property owner though?
I have.
Okay. They're requesting it from the county then or?
They did not request it, when I spoke with them, I made, I made the, I made the initiative of speaking with the property owner and they did not.
They just not request the sign or?
They, they my understanding is there was communication between a member of the public and a member of the board of supervisory.
But they.
When I, when I spoke with the landowner, yeah, that person was not completely aware of everything that was even going on. So he and I had a bad communication.
That landowner specifically told me that he offered to pay for the sign and you still said no.
I think there's gotta be justification for any sign that's put up, this, the landowner talked to me and there is a intersection, they live on the corner of an intersection and admitted that stop signs for north and southbound traffic, he sees traffic running those signs. It's, that bothers me, because that tells you that traffic operators are not even obeying traffic laws in that area or in Cassue County, the state of Iowa, whatever you want to talk. So. And my point is put up a sign, it's just another sign for drivers to ignore. Gotta have justification, and if drivers aren't stopping at stop signs, what's gonna make them look at a warning sign?
Well, there's always gonna be people who disobey the, disobey the law, and I guess we can't control that and, I mean, it's kind of like there are kids who come out of the school system that I've educated, but that doesn't mean the school doesn't produce results. I mean, the, you know, signs are, they still produce results, I mean, they're there for a reason, obviously, the stop sign, most people will stop at stop sign, but there will be people who don't. I mean, that, that five mile an hour is a pretty slim margin, and if he's willing to pay for it.
Five feet, not five.
Or excuse me, five, five feet, if he's willing to pay for it, could we, that'd be kind of a nice public to private partnership there. If we would pursue that.
My question, then, anytime anybody would want any kind of sign, if they pay for it, are we going to just put it up? I mean, are they gonna start providing that type of a service and then are we going to, uh, when it happens to get knocked over or needs to be removed, are we going to continue to do that? Uh, we could be opening a Pandora's box by doing that.
I, I don't feel that was the point of my comment, that he said he was willing to pay for it, the point of my comment saying that is that he wouldn't offer to pay for it if he didn't want a sign.
We are providing a service.
No, Carter, Carter said, if you're willing to pay for it, why not just put it up? And that's, that's why I reply, we may be opening a Pandora's box by.
And that probably wasn't the right way to, to say that either. Yep, and I guess if he's willing to pay for it, he sees justification for it as a member of the public. I mean, I think there's, there's cause for, for one there. I mean, we have them in Sexton.
What is the cause?
I'm saying.
What is the justification?
The justification.
That's what we're getting to.
Right, justification being that the house is right next to the road and the kids are crying. That's, it's a hard place to see. And I've had neighbors reach out to me up there that encourage us to, to do something and I feel the public is desiring this. It's just a, yeah.
It's, it's a difficult situation, but again, you, you've got to look at justification and that's what I will say.
I guess matter of what the board.
It's made to have justification.
Would, would it be?
Person would come into the boardroom and make the request instead. He said, she said, and that nothing like go on. I think something like this, that she committed to the boardroom.
So someone who works all day long while we have meetings, is supposed to take time off work to drive down here to ask for a sign that's going to cost less than it's going to cost them to get off of work.
That's our job.
That's ridiculous.
Quite reluctant to be here.
Yeah, I had no, I had nothing to go on. They never contacted me and nobody's ever said anything to me about it. You know, two different stories here, so.
Would, would it be easier just to put a stop sign up and have a four-way stop sign there? I'm.
That is not justified at all. The four-way stop. That I guess that's not justify that either.
So it sounds mainly we need to have sheriff's department set that, sit up there and watch for people on stop signs.
Well, that's, that's a difficult situation also because law enforcement, they, they have a lot of work. In fact, I was just visiting with a county engineer and yesterday and the town under five hundred people would like stop signs put up in their town. The reason they want stop signs is to slow traffic down. Well, a stop sign is meant for traffic to stop. The speed limit in the town is twenty-five miles per hour. A law enforcement officer, when he is at the town, traffic travels twenty-five miles per hour. When the law enforcement's not there, they don't. Now, law enforcement, I know our law enforcement, we don't have that many deputies and that many, and I know a lot of our deputies are out doing other law enforcement related activities. So the public can make a statement that says something to the effect that we need more law enforcement, but they don't like it when they have to pay for any law enforcement. So, you know, I, I visited with previous sheriffs about different situations. I, I could certainly, and I've visited with Roger about different situations. Have cooperation and I can make some things there, talk to him about that. But we're still talking about a landowner board member and maybe placement of a warning sign.
Seeing, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a question and do for a rule follow vote.
I would say no.
Ask?
Yes.
Question?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Jerks?
No.
Motion carried three to one.
May I ask for an interpretation of the law on this? I believe there has to be an engineer's report in order to.
You did a study already.
I think that the engineer's report would have to show that the, the sign is warranted. If it, if it's possible, may I ask for an opinion about having an engineer on this?
Engineer?
Or excuse me, county attorney.
Okay. Yes, that's fine.
So are we going to double check every single sign for legal compliance in this county?
New signs, absolutely. When we, when we put in new signs, we'll make sure that it is done correctly. This is the first time in my career that a Kaseem County Board of Supervisors has directed a county engineer to do something that the engineer said was not justified. And together, the board supervisors and the county engineer have to work together. And I don't know, I mean, what is next? I mean, does the county engineer need it? I believe the code does say that there is supposed to be a county engineer, that county shall hire a county engineer to do the work. And the county engineer's responsibilities are pretty much spelled out in the code for supervisors. Or for secondary roads are spelled out and have been attested. So I think it's important, I think we've got a situation here where the board, I don't know where, where the patients are.
Be good to get an opinion.
We have some construction in the right of way.
Tammy, would you please provide me that motion?
Yeah.
After the meeting.
Absolutely.
Uh, yes. There are two permits. One of them was just given to our office at three thirty, around three thirty yesterday afternoon. And the newest location map may not be in your folder or may already be opened by somebody who could not replace it. Uh, we got a request from Northwest Communications Cooperative. They are working south of Widdamore on B forty-four. They are putting in a new communication cable, hooking up from a pedestal on Highway fifteen and hooking up a pedestal on Twentieth Avenue. Uh, this work would be on the road right away and I'd recommend that the board would approve of this request.
So, so moved.
So moved by now. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimous.
Uh, may I ask a second, excuse me?
I do.
Thank you. And then the other request that came in late yesterday afternoon, uh, this is south of Wesley. It sounds like a building site in Grove is being taken down at two thousand seven, two hundred forty avenue. Um, and they are removing electrical service to that building site. Very little work in the road right away, but just a little bit, I would recommend that the board would approve of this request as well.
So move. Motion by one, second by, by man. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimous. We're up to discussion with the engineer and zoning administrator.
Okay. A construction project is moving along, uh, the resurfacing projects that were, the asphalt was completed on or being shouldered uh, this week, hopefully they will be able to get all that completed this week. And then, uh, traffic marking will be worked on and and then the roads will be open. The project, uh, south of Itanka, the deck is being formed. Uh, once they have the deck formed, they'll pour concrete, uh, then they'll have fair rail to construct and guard rail, then that road would be ready to be open. Uh, the Algonah Airport is pushing a start back, start date back to September eighteenth. So their project is supposed to be starting next week, which will end up closing, uh, that one hundredth avenue. And the project with south fed by the DOT, um, pavement's been placed, it's curing, it's been shouldered. I think all that needs to be done is a pro, pro-phylometer needs to be going over it and get smoothness that they need. So that should be open soon. Um, we've got some open positions, they're doing some doing some interviews this week. Operators are working five eight-hour days now, starting yesterday. The, I guess, transfer station. I did, uh, interview our only applicant for that position and I would like to hire Blake Stevens. He was the only person that applied for the manager position. I'd like to hire him. Uh, on August eighth, I had an item on the agenda to appoint Blake. And it was tabled. Again, on August fifteenth, there was discussion and, uh, there was a motion to table. It did not pass. So I'm asking the board what I should be doing.
If we don't need a motion, or do we need a motion or do we not?
It's his, his employee.
Yep, I would say go ahead and appoint Blake.
Okay, thank you.
Have we ever appointed a manager of a landfill and transfer station without action by the board?
I think on an annual basis, the transfer station manager is appointed. And in the past, we, the board has acted on recommendation and wanted it down.
I would say with that, it should be on next week's agenda to take action.
Okay, well, I would like to set up interviews for another person, another employee at the transfer station. If we advance Blake manager, Blake's position operator will become open. And I'd like to get some interviews set up for that. We can delay it another week. I will let you know, our road department has been covering for the transfer station since August seventh. And the reason that is because on August eighth board did not appoint a manager. And we have some people, road department operators, that they're, they, they want to work on the roads. So I would say that, who is going to put, putting this on the agenda?
You've put it on previously, right?
I did, it was tabled on August eighth by the board. I put it on, on August eighth, it was tabled. On August fifteenth, there was a motion, I think there was four board members. Vote was two to two. The motion, I believe, was to table it and it did not pass.
It's tabled, but if you don't need to put it back on, it means it's gonna be still on. Tabled, that's take it off the agenda.
Thank you, you've all, you still have to have it on the agenda though.
Do you need an agenda item, Tammy?
Yes.
I don't think it was tabled, but it means it's still on the agenda.
I think we'd have.
The table and motion failed through.
Yeah, so it was fifteenth, there was a failure.
It was a failed motion.
I will put it on the agenda. That's all that I, oh, excuse me, there's one more thing. We are doing bridge inspections and there is a bridge to the north of Sexton, approximately four and a half miles. And it was originally constructed in nineteen sixty, it was widened in nineteen ninety-one. In two thousand sixteen, uh, our consultant that does bridge inspection posted, recommend posting that at twenty-seven ton single vehicle and then a forty-forty for combination. And the one truck series, meaning one truck could go over that, uh, which really reduced it to legal loads as long as one truck was going over it at the time. Uh, we just got uh, some communication from our, our consultant due to, uh, deterioration in those original pile that were nineteen sixty, uh, the capacity has been reduced greatly. And they would like to, uh, they recommend, excuse me, posting to be fifteen ton twenty-twenty without one truck series. If we were to advance that prop, that construction project, it is in our fiscal year twenty twenty-seven uh, program, if we were to advance that so that we could let it next spring, which our office could do, the consultant would not be, uh, would change his recommendation, keep it the way it is right now. But if we're gonna wait till twenty twenty-seven, he recommends that the posting be lowered. So the problem is that we all said we eliminate other bridges for this as a priority. And I guess I was kind of curious what the board believes should be done there.
What's the traffic like on that bridge?
One hundred thirty-three vehicles per day was twenty twenty-one, uh, traffic count.
What a bit of truck traffic on that road, it's the only blacktop.
It's a blacktop. Brings in.
Yeah. I would recommend moving it forward and.
Trying to advance it.
Yeah, advance it.
What are, what would we be comparing to or what would be falling behind?
Well, we got some different options. We've been planned on doing two timber bridges, uh, down south of Wesley between Laverne and Wesley by George Gunthers and Dana Armed Orfers. Uh, we could cancel that. Uh, there's some, there's a bridge up north of Lone Rock, a Culver project up north of Lone Rock. And we could talk about, there's some bridges down by Mike Cole houses that are on some gravel roads. We have bridges.
Most of those bridges are all on gravel roads, so.
Gravel roads and timber.
Right.
Is what they are. Structures which we've had quite a bit of over the. Structures which we've had quite a bit of over the years, maintenance work due to loadings. So we do have some projects that we could definitely eliminate to, or delay. Eliminate that forward.
Anything else for Doug? No, thank you very much.
You bet, thank you, lady.
I do, just before these, what, what, what am I doing as far as, I know a county attorney opinion was requested.
I was going to write a letter to you.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, so I just wanted to clarify on what it was. Because it's obviously something that's before the board, so I was hoping to at least have some idea.
Um, my understanding, we have a code of obligations, chapter, section, there is a installation regulatory warning signs require the engineers report and then action by the board supervisors. And I, I made a report, said that the sign was not justified and the board have an action to direct me to install it.
Okay. Because I, yeah, I just came in the last part and I have no idea what the discussion going about.
So I was explaining them. Yeah, thank you.
I just wasn't clear at the conclusion whether or not that would be your.
We are back to the doors.
Um. So you recall, I believe it was October of, or November of last year, Judge Sandy was kind of the one judge of district who's been delegated with the administrative duties of the judicial district three A, which is where we are. We talked about the lack of security on the floor, the, the court floor, top floor of the building. And, you know, I think there was at least a consensus, I don't remember if there was actually actually, I think there was a motion to approve the, the looking into or the investigation as to what it would cost and what would need to be done. I think there was a report, we went up there after that meeting and looked around and, and made recommendations. We were one of the few, I believe, don't quote me, but I believe it was either three or four counties in the judicial district that have basically no security system whatsoever on the court floor. And as you know, most of the time in, in court actions, emotions run high and that's when a potential problem could arise. So simple fixes, simple barriers can provide a wealth of a wealth of security, wealth of safety. So I talked to Derek and he showed me some figures that he found out about what it would cost to install those simple types of security fixes. And so I'll turn it over to Derek for that.
Yeah, and then part of that discussion too was getting a deck at the end of third floor for three days a week, so that was approved at that time.
Yes, that was, and I believe there is one set to go as soon as we get these in, these, these things in place.
Yeah, so we're setting up an office upstairs for that to be used, so they're able to work up there too during downtime. But yeah, we were able to put together pricing. The total project is about seventy-eight thousand dollars. That includes twenty-three doors, all the installation beaches and some bulked glass and a couple spots upstairs replacing a door that has glass that can't be replaced with bulked glass. I'm looking for a motion to approve that today. It, as a whole project, it does include the server rooms, both at the LEC and downstairs as part of that project as well. Because we do have hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment in those rooms, we'd like to have some security. We've also got, I think, four doors over at the election building, same thing there, we have significant exposure there to try and reduce some of that risk. So on the financial side, we do have ten thousand dollars in election funds that Tammy applied for and got that can be used for this project. We also have through our insurance carrier ICAT, we get a thousand dollars every year for each agency for security upgrades, so we would get a thousand dollars for the county, a thousand dollars for the nine-one agency and put that towards this project as well. So after the grants, we're looking at about sixty-seven thousand dollars for the entire project, so for, for that.
So we have any other?
Well, I did ask us through to Todd, we have the L A T C F funds, we have a hundred thousand dollars. I know we talked before about possibly using that money for this. I did run it by Todd and had him look some things over his. He did want me to take another look at section two E B, which talks about buying domestic Lee according to the L A T C F guidance. So I have given that to Derek, I don't know if he's
One of the companies for the lock manufacturers out of Arizona, the other one's out of Connecticut. Both in America, the Connecticut company is a veteran owned company, so
So we should
I think we're, from a product standpoint, we're good.
So all we would have to do is, I don't remember if we budgeted any money in L A T C F funds this year. We could, if you guys approved of this today, we could add that to a budget amendment that's in the works, so that money would be available.
Do we get any other?
Yes, we have, we have two other quotes. One was pretty close in price, put it a different vendor for subcontractor for some of the wiring. A glass was the contractor on part of that project. And then we had another third quote that was significantly more expensive and the need would be more significant. So if you guys want to see copies, I was making sure to provide them, so this seemed to be the most cost effective.
Willie has been involved, you some?
Involve me?
Yeah.
I guess.
You got any, you got any comments on it, because we don't.
I've been there the whole time, it's, the contractor do most of the work, I would be just more on site if they needed something.
Yeah, Will's been involved with this. They have, it's going to be the court for trying to, that's what I mean with that. Because it has just a little square window in it. It's regular glass, but it'd be so, full of resistive glass. So that'd be the test one.
We did take a look at all the doors upstairs, make sure that we were putting secure systems and secure doors. So that's part of the cost too, is making sure that we're covering all of our bases and I think
They're all solid core doors.
Good job of that.
Thousand, just like what we have.
Right.
But the other problem is we be trying to match that.
They give a timeframe on completion?
All of this equipment, well, I'm going to rephrase that, the electronic side of the equipment is only a few weeks out. The door glass side is going to be significantly longer. They're going to try and do all the doors that they can prior to that other piece being done, so it'll be like a two-part project to, to make that, so. If you approve that.
I make the motion to approve it. And then
With the funding.
With the funding being added to the L T C F.
Budget amendment.
Yes, yes, thank you. Drop like there.
I have a motion on the floor. Everybody understand, everyone, if you want it, repeat it. We'll let her get done right up there.
So a motion by Walter to approve the direct access controls from, I'll have to add in the
It'll be Minus Technology for a portion of it and American Glass for a portion of it.
And I'll put in the amount?
Yep, seventy-nine thousand.
Okay, with funding from L A T C F being added to the budget amendment.
Well, let me rephrase that, seventy-nine thousand for the total project, county portion of about sixty-seven thousand. Sixty-seven five hundred, that'll
Get cleared?
Yep.
I would entertain a second to that motion.
Post the motion.
Yeah. Any discussion on the motion in a second? Seeing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Flash?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion very unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Time to get done. We're not a call. Do you want to start drainage now, or do you want to take a break, Jack?
Go again as well.
Yeah.
I'll hear.
And then there was one.
Another, other parts.
Perfect. So what's your secret for all this weight loss?
Uh, a lot of discipline, I don't know where I found it from, but
I didn't even recognize him when you walked in.
Pretty clean eating and a lot of the activities, so. Finally doing what I promised I was going to do when I got a dog, was going to go be active like that dog. Then earlier this year, I was looking at the two of us just getting fatter and it was like time to make a change here. And she's been less happy about it than I am.
Yeah, goldies and birdies, the red ones, sixty that you were out the other day.
Start to keep copies of this here now.
Lateral twenty-eight, but it's sixty-three, who wants to say? It's up higher in the system.
And I know this can be a lot hang on to your cell away, anybody that that isn't interested in keeping a copy, I can gather them back up and get them out, I hope the contractors that want to, so. Thank you.
Burning up paper and being That's what we do.
We have to make them lighter?
Maybe just for me.
Maybe we go open.
He's got done talking about the noise.
Maybe we need to paint him orange, so we're looking for
Doesn't stop and jump out.
No, it's clear, very clear.
But I you, my people, that that's all for the records, I'm just copying here for a while.
So as soon as she gets a option.
What's that? Yeah, I, I've, I said, I'm like, I, I left him there, but
Yeah.
We can, we can move him.
That work, we'll talk about it.
How many years have I been going to West? Or did, did, how many?
I love it. I'll find it too.
Okay, sorry, two, three, four, I just wanted to make, how many is this by us to save us? This Christian, I'll be leaving from my place.
Good. See you down there.
I guess for discussion sake, we could probably start here before March gets in this, but number eight for liquidated damages. Tyler and I had talked about this a bit and I talked to Jim Hudson about it as far as what threshold we could go to or whatever, with this being a project well over three million dollars. I don't think five hundred dollars a day is enough incentive to be completed on time. And I know one of our secondary road projects, Doug just mentioned how we had a thousand dollars a day for that, which was much smaller.
Really different.
Yeah, yeah, so I had asked Jim Hudson about fifteen hundred dollars a day and he said there's, there's various numbers for state DOT projects and all that sort of stuff, but he said, at the end of the day, we would have to, if, if we go to collect liquidated damages, the basically the challenge we would potentially get is that we would have to show the actual damage to the district, but if you've got well over three million dollars out there, interest alone would be substantial. I mean, if, if they're not getting done in a timely manner, then if you factor in crop damages and everything else. He said he had no issue with fifteen hundred, we can't set it at fifty thousand for the fun of it, but a reasonable number. He said that he had no issue with that, so was gonna bring that to the board's attention, so I guess I think it should be higher than five hundred dollars a day for a project of this magnitude. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Tyler?
Yeah, all, for buying review into it. What I got was liquidated damages can't be set at an unreasonably punitive amount. It can't be excessive like how, throughout an example of fifty thousand, you can't have it be just a astronomical dollar amount. It has to be, it has to fall in line with a reasonable estimate or assumption for damages and so outside of that, what outside of that consideration, whatever the board, as the trustees feel comfortable with on that, will certainly edit in the plans and specifications for when they go out. There is There is, there is also at project closeout, there's the. Opportunity for the. In addition to, or i- if it's going to be larger, the factor for. Actually calculating the actual damages. Uh. Not to, not that I'm like, like our monitors or bringing back up, but very similar to what we did on. Four, it goes out on four, where there were actuals payments assessed back to the. Off that, so.
But if we don't have it upfront in the. Plans and specs, then collecting that from the contractor could be more complicated.
It becomes more of a calculation that's required, yes.
How many acres does this whole project cover?
A decent sized district.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I I would kind of apologize, I I don't remember.
See, I look at this, it's pretty sizable of a period.
And I don't. Think of it as anything where it's.
I mean, because when you're talking that many acres, that's a lot of hard land, that's another property.
Yeah, and I mean, I mean, some we couldn't go higher. I just. Wouldn't want to get too far out there that we have to do a lot of math to defend the figure, um. I think just with the extent of everything getting more expensive, I think it's probably. Good practice for. All of our projects to be moving that dire dollar figure higher um. In accordance with. The economy of today, because that's, it's been five hundred dollars a day for decades. Um, but. We could go higher, but I think fifteen hundred's fairly easy to defend, in my opinion, yes.
Yeah, I I guess like when whenever anybody's ready, I can.
Go ahead.
Go for it.
Yeah, perfect. All right. Um. Here for the filing of the final plans, specifications for drainage of the sixty sub four. The uh facility improvement project. At the public hearing, there was an. An approved route forward to go to the final plans and specifications with the alternate one. Of the half inch drainage coefficient and an alternate two of the three quarter inch drainage coefficient. These plans and specifications have both of those alternates in them, and the items. For such as well as all of the divisions and division one being. The replacement of twenty thousand nine hundred and forty linear feet of the main tile. And both of those, I uh alternate one again being the half inch drainage coefficient and alternate two being the three quarter inch. Drainage coefficient and all of the sizes laid out there in the description as such. As well as divisions two, three, four, and five, which are all county road crossings that the secondary roads department. Would be responsible for. The secondary roads department has seen these plans, they've. Reviewed them, made changes as they'd like to see fit, and we are currently in compliance with their. Recommendations and requirements. Bidders will be required to complete all divisions and alternates as part of their bid. The notice to bidders will need to be published once a week for two consecutive weeks prior to the bid opening. As well, we post the plans and specs electronically on Quest CDN. And we send out notifications to contractors on a list that we have that are interested. And have done this work in the past. Illuminarily, we have uh set for consideration between Marge and I, working on a a schedule. Uh Tuesday, October third at ten AM for the bid opening with bid consideration. Being the following week, October tenth. Just giving us time to make sure everybody's math checks and the values are right. There's a lot going into this, a lot of items. Uh, I I hate to rush uh on a day and and not have those values right. For the estimated project costs, the division one, uh these are the the first two division ones. The half inch and three quarter inch, alternate one and two are the essentially the. Estimates for what the assessable project cost would be, with alternate one being three million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And alternate two being three million nine hundred thousand dollars. The different divisions for the road crossings. Uh, division two, alternate one, twenty thousand, division. Two, alternate two of twenty one thousand dollars. Division three, alternate one being ninety four thousand. Division three, alternate two being a hundred thousand dollars. The reason those are larger values is. That is the paved road where there would be a uh boring installation of a steel pipe as opposed to an open cut of concrete. Division four, alternate one of eleven thousand five hundred dollars, division four, alternate two of. Thirteen thousand dollars, division five, alternate one of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. And division five, alternate two of sixteen thousand dollars. For total estimates on the half inch drainage coefficient, again, these aren't to be the assessable, the first numbers will be the total contract. Uh, a set district accessible cost, but the total alternate one of. Three million, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars and the total alternate two of four million and fifty thousand dollars. As part of bids, a security will be required in the uh. To the amount of five percent of bid. Sales tax districts, base districts are exempt from sales tax. Those exempt certificates often come from the auditor's office. Completion date of the work we have set as December first of twenty twenty four. That would give what was left of this fall as well as one full year. Force of destruction. I feel that that is more than appropriate, uh even though the. Project is rather large. We've already had a little bit of discussion on liquidated damages. Uh, we have set those just had what they had been previously at five hundred dollars a day. However, that can certainly be altered to a larger amount of. Number fifteen hundred dollars a day was thrown out. Uh, that can be. Edited into the plans and specifications before they go up. Uh, after the approval.
I guess on that, does anyone have any thoughts or opinions? Regarding to liquidated damages?
We hardly ever used it. I it's, yeah, it.
That's and and hopefully we don't have to, but I think it'd be.
We need to. In in the name of fact, it's been the same number for decades. I mean, there's no other number that's been saying that, you know.
Yep.
So, I mean, it makes sense to raise it at least a little bit.
And I, and I think to that point, um of never having to use it, I think it is valuable setting it at an amount. That it's. It reminds people that they don't want to have to.
Right. Insurance for the county, basically saying that we want them to refit the project.
And and I think that encourages a fair bidding environment, so everyone knows that this is the expectation. And move forward on the same playing field, so.
I would agree with setting it at fifteen hundred.
You want to do that in the way that emotions?
Yeah, I I think, I think as it gets, when it uh. When there's a motion for the acceptance, um.
Incorporate that.
Incorporate that, yeah, and we'll, we'll make the changes there. Uh, on a project of this magnitude, we like to send letters to the landowners on whom the work is gonna be done, just letting them know. Uh, especially with one that's that there's gonna be nowhere around, we're gonna have to go through. Um, and uh. Work through ground that's gonna have crop on it. There's gonna be some pretty substantial crop damages through those areas, so. We like to notify those landowners as well.
Did you know how many acres?
Of the of prop damage?
No, in the district.
In the district that I I was looking here, I'm, I have to apologize, I don't know off the top of my head what that.
It's gonna be sizable assessment.
It it, yeah, I think. Uh, I don't know, I don't, I don't have my report with me. I had an estimate per acre, I thought it was. Uh, between fifteen and eighteen.
I think the half inch was like fifteen hundred, I think, three quarter was like seventeen something.
Yeah, I was gonna go between fifteen and eighteen hundred dollars an acre.
So if you did. Let's say four million. Divided by eighteen hundred is like twenty two hundred. I think it's low two thousands.
That sounds about right.
I know we've talked over the number before, but yeah, I don't have it exact. But it's, it's a sizable district.
There will be a a performance bond and a uh one year maintenance bond for required as part of the project. And that gets us to eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Uh, warrants will be used, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, anticipated number of installment payments, I would imagine twenty. And the interest rate that has been.
Oh, it's six percent, six and seven advanced now, so.
It's, it's five percent.
We have been using five, but we're gonna have to raise it.
Okay. So I'm. Man, and that can be said, I guess I don't know what the warrants on the project so far have been, but.
Five.
So there'll be a five on this, so. All right. With that. Are there any questions?
For those last three, do you need motions separate each of them or encompass that?
I think within the encompass of.
Do all of them together?
I think with everything together, it's clear enough that it's an acceptance of the final plans and specifications. Uh, with a alternate to the liquidated damages going from five hundred dollars to fifteen hundred. A day using warrants with a. Installment over twenty years at five percent. Is. Is uh. Is what would be.
Do you, Tammy, do you have a list of those changes written down? Okay.
And then uh the opening and consideration.
October third and October tenth.
Third and tenth.
Third and tenth, yeah, opening and.
You want to add a separate motion for setting date and time?
I, I think David's right. I think those two should be set out from the first.
I I would make a motion to um accept the report and. The final plans for drain sixty sub four with the changes we discussed.
Which would be fifteen hundred use warrants, twenty year payment and five percent.
Correct. Those four items.
Do I have a second to that move?
One second.
Second by Wacker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carried. Then you need second motion?
I'd make motion to set the date and time for bid letting to October third at ten AM. Here in the boardroom and considering bids, October tenth at ten AM, also in the boardroom.
Do I have a second to that motion?
That open bids.
So, open.
Open bid at October tenth.
October's, open bids October third and consider that the tenth.
Except on October tenth, which would be the right word.
Well. Considering would be.
I hope we accept them. I will get good bids and I hope the government, they get accepted.
Yep.
Well, we'll see.
Do I have a second to his motion? For the dates, October third and October tenth?
Like.
By now, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carried unanimous. Anything else, Tyler?
That's it for me. I'm already packing up. Uh, I will say, I have gotten quite a bit of interest. On that project already, just from rumors that. Contractors and pipe manufacturers have heard, so.
They don't have any word.
I think that's, and that's what I'm hearing.
Snowy, that's really good, yeah.
That's the hope, you know, my fingers crossed with. We could wrap on some wood, but uh, yeah, I I've heard from contractors. About half a dozen contractors and. Appreciate it. Thanks all.
Can I have some committee reports till Jack is there?
We probably should wave.
Think so?
Yeah.
Wait for what?
Till Jack gets back.
Old, old horizon.
We could have a report on it on. Nastication. Stick your white ball?
Yes.
I don't.
Got anything else from Marge?
Think so. Oh. Marge, what is the, a- after last week, and I talked to you on the phone briefly, but what's the timeline look like? Jacobson West regard?
They were gonna.
You didn't think of that for.
Get out and look at stuff and and start doing. Some information, they get back to us.
Okay.
So. They were ready to hit the ground running.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, Marge.
David Dan, which be be fifteen hundred, it's like. Very good, this is a board health, so get the science of green. Thanks, Jack.
You got any board reports, Jack?
Uh, no, I do not. Um. This. Just uh drainage stuff last week, listening to some landowners, what's up on P K one? I think you spoke to, you talked to Stephen Schley. I should talk to him too.
Talked to a couple of them on P K one.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're wanting it done in a hurry.
Yes, they do, and. Um.
And they don't want to pay anything.
Right.
Those two things I got.
Uh, yep, and, yeah. But um also, I I had no meetings last week, but I did get a call, or I called, um had a request from Eric Arndorfer. Wesley to call me uh before the meeting this morning, and he wanted thoughts shared. The board and that. I said, okay, I will share them, but uh, in light of what happened in the Dakotas with the pipeline and stuff and. Being denied in the counties that passed ordinances, he. Being denied in the counties that passed ordinances, Steve. Um, I just wanted to express this. Disappointment in the board for not moving forward with something, um, and wondering if we would ever consider. Um. Even a revised. Ordinance from what we had or not, so I told him I would share that and.
The problem is there's North Dakota and South Dakota have different laws and Iowa and.
I realize that it's been ruled that we don't have authority like they do in North Dakota and South Dakota. I realize that, but um, you know. They would like like to move forward anyway, you know, so that's that's all I'm just sharing.
Why do something that's not going to hold water is.
Do you know, is there anything that we can do as a board to? I guess. In light of everything happening that we can do to be proactive and.
We have Whipple working on it.
Yeah, and we're in and we're in the intervention.
I talked to about three other supervisors at the Niocog meeting and.
Yep.
They're all doing the same thing that we're doing.
Yep.
So. To do anything further, what is it, that's staying within the laws that we have in Iowa.
Yep, and I, a lot of, a lot of folks say we're relieving Shelby County out to dry, you know, is there alone and they're not? And I visit with Shelby County numerous times and their chairman and we're. On the same page about things, so it's.
Bremer County, I've never heard anything.
There's never been a result on Bremer County yet. So, and who knows when that would happen?
Yeah.
Sure, at this point, they're just waiting for the I U B.
And that's getting closer.
That is getting awful close, I've listened to a few different things from down there. You can definitely tell that. That Summit views the hearings as more of a formality than an actual discussion. Yeah. But anyway, that's all I have.
Yeah, I've pretty much heard about the same thing from down there, um, a couple of people I've talked to have said they. They're not pleased with how, you know, Summit's handling some of the the questions and things like that and, yeah. Like you said, it seems more of like a formality to them than than actually addressing issues and so, so.
I think biggest complaint was with how meeting is being run versus. Now, of course, you you expect Summit's comments, but but just how it's being moderated, I think it's a lot of people's complaint. Uh, no, no meetings.
Um, EMS meeting tonight, um. Looked at the repair request that was put in. Few weeks ago here, whatever, um, by Beetle, I don't know if you want to talk about that at all or not, um. Jack came. Long story short, there kind of needs to be some. Discussion and stuff between the private landowners right now and see where we go from there, whether. They want anything done with the county main or not, or the lateral.
We basically, you know, left to two options, it says you guys either have to come up with a lifetime easement. Uh, agreement between. The beetles and goshes, or you're going to have to put in a request to to uh, repair the the main.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, so.
It's very shallow and poor condition, probably has been for a long.
Really, they're, well, it's in their hands, whatever they want to do. They 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 put it repaired twice in, well, well, and we'll have to put, you know, work on the main. But if they don't, then they need to get, you know, go to their attorney and do a lifetime and then. Uh, rights of toll, you know, maybe told them, right, he says, you know, you've got, you're a lot better off now than you were before, you got. And there's nobody else on that main. Nobody, nobody else needs it, it's not, it's not being used by anybody else. That end of the main, yeah, yeah, so I guess it's just a bad way to see what the landowners. You know, do because. So, anyway, it went pretty well, I think, you know, there's a little. Little animosity there to keep going on, but you know. Turned out okay.
Anything else, Carl?
Think so.
I had a Niocog meeting last night. Um, it was the end of the year, we had the end of the year report, they drove. Six hundred and seventy eight thousand miles last year delivering people from one place to another. They have a hundred and fifty drivers and support staff. Uh, they approved a thousand. Improvements to homes anywhere from bathrooms to water heaters to. Total. Renovation. Um, they had two hundred or twenty million in grants that they received last year. They built fifty new homes, did fifty. Major renovations, some of them were in Mason City and they uh, made homes in the top of old businesses that were empty. And utilize the room that was up there. Um. Since they started, they did a hundred and seventy two units. That would be housing units at a hundred and twenty one million dollars. And they've spent nine million dollars in trails and I think one of them is here in Altona that they did fund. So that was the year end report, any questions about Niocog? Spend a lot of money, that's all.
The goal, who does?
So we have time with our auditor.
So, next week. Next up on the agenda is the third official district department of correction services, Ray Hanson. Has asked to share information with you about community based corrections. Department services and client data for Sioux County and to receive any questions or concerns. So, she will be here next Tuesday. Then. Um. I, Melissa and I talked to Ayler's and Cooney uh, with Ann regarding our employee handbook. After Karen and I were at ISAT, like, whether we were. Doing things correctly, so um, we have sent Ann a draft. As a handbook and they are going to look at it and then send it back to us and uh, we suggest we. Talk to department heads after we get that back and then uh. Go through it, they'll make any recommendations or changes and then then it will come back to the board for approval after that, so. That's why we are with that. I'm sure it's going to take a little bit of time to go through everything, but I think that that'll save time in the long run from like going through it now. Everybody must know. Where we stand with that. Final, it's going to be in Des Moines at the airport holiday and the house file seven eighteen. Board supervisors has a morning agenda, but they are invited to stay the afternoon with auditors if they would like. It's going to be a lot of information in a short amount of time, and hopefully we come away with. With a good understanding of the law because it's not clearly stated. In my opinion, so I know Department of Management, Kerry Johnson and Ted Dallas are going to be there. And hopefully they have. Some good information, I'm sure they deal with. I think that's. And it is being reported twice a week, so for those of you that aren't able to make it, you will be able to watch that one through afterwards.
The only thing I heard about it is one person told me that they want less taxes and more service. Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Anything else come before the good at Tousus County? Entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Uh, motion in the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Not quite finished.
It's all your fault.
I know, I know.
You're back.
People's back out to the hospital. Have a good week.